The crowded area, but also welcome and thank each and every one of you for coming tonight. This means a lot to our community that you would show up like this. I can't tell you. It is overwhelming and I understand that there is a problem and it's recognized and we have the people here tonight that hopefully can help us address the situation, the problem that we're having in our seniors. Food product that we have. This is a good city council meeting tonight. We're going to keep it calm and cool as we can. I understand there's some problems and issues with food, but we're going to handle it and we have people from Montgomery. We're honored to have our guests tonight, all of you that have come down. Miss Jeanne, we appreciate you. And thank y'all so much for making the trip down to help us out before we have. GA Foods is represented and we certainly thank you for coming, I guess, up. And appreciate you coming in and maybe help us through all the problems we're having with it. I think Christine said the best thing earlier and thank y'all both for coming. Ms. Snell, Jeff Sorel, and Donnie, we appreciate you coming and everybody else. If it is an isolated incident, well, it's easier to fix.
Right.
I'm so glad you said that because I wasn't thinking that way and it really is choosing another direction, so hopefully it'll be that way. Do you have a spokesperson or the seniors that would like to say something about the issues that you're having with the food problem?
I think Buck was wanting to.
You know, one thing is that some days we don't know what we're really eating. One day last week, we had pressed chicken and I don't know what that is. Couldn't, once you got it up to your mouth, you couldn't chew it up.
Yes.
But then when they have collards, it's mostly stems. And I don't, I don't know where they got food like that. But anyhow, we appreciate the way Robbie is taking care of things for us.
Yes.
And she's been more than helpful to all of us. And so, and I think it's time that we should be able to start meeting in back in the cafeteria up there. If we can meet like this, why can't we meet up there?
I hear you. I do.
And the meals were good as long as we was up there. So.
We appreciate that.
Several times we figured if we had mystery meat, we didn't know what.
Look, I'd like to mention two items we have is sweet potato casserole. They take sweet potatoes and pure raw egg them. And there's no seasoning, no taste. Potato salad looks like these cut potatoes like miniature marshmallow, some good little mayonnaise. And that's it. There's no taste. It's awful, the way they do it.
And the sweet potatoes had no color. You know, you expect the sweet potato to be colored.
I've helped serve in the kitchen for over ten years and we're constantly having bad shortages in our food. It just didn't show up or there was not enough in the pans that weren't full service. We've needed straws to drink our sweet potato, mashed potatoes in the past. And a lot of the foods are burnt and scorched and just not fit to serve.
And I've tried, I've tried some of those myself. Somehow they mysteriously end up on my desk and tell me to try them and I do.
Since we, since we have to go there now to get our meal.
Yes ma'am.
There's not only about three times a month that I will go because the rest of it, I just, I know it's not going to be any good.
And I'm sorry for that and that's why we're here. I promise you, we're going to get to it. And I know that the guests that we have here tonight look the same thing and we're going to try to help it. Anybody else?
Most of our seniors have stayed at home for a year. It's time that we get back together.
Yes sir.
Most of our buddies had their jobs. And if we can meet like this, why can't we eat up there? Of course, it's spaced out a lot better than there.
My name's Aunt Fuller. I deliver the meals to these precious people. And sometimes I need a note that says I'm sorry. They ask for menus so they can identify what they're eating. And I see dishes at the door that they have put out for their cats and their dogs and the food's not eaten. This is, this is sad. It hurts my heart. I am so thankful that my mama don't have to eat these meals. I get emotional. I can't help it. But I've always believed that God has a special punishment for people who mistreat children and the seniors. And I feel like I'm mistreating by delivering these meals. It's not just started. It's been like ongoing for two years, I know. And they're precious and all they see sometimes is us. I've got a school bus too and all those kids see sometimes is us. But we gotta do something.
We are.
The seniors, the seniors that she's talking about is the homebound. They're not able to look after theirselves. We can get up and cook for ourselves, but a lot of them are not.
Well, I was visiting them when we went out and passed out the Christmas gifts and the baskets to them. That was probably the most turnaround I've ever seen in my life, what I saw. You know of it, you think of it, but when you're actually in there with them. And the one lady lived on 27, she lives in a room that's probably, out, was it 300 square feet? That's her whole house. That's it. There's more medicine in there than there was anything else. And she hadn't seen anybody until we got there at Christmas except for who brings the meals when they bring them. And I'm like you, when you're handing them that, you're thinking, this is all she's going to eat the whole day. And that day, I think we had surprise something, you know, what it was called. And it was, I mean, it was, we didn't know what it was, honestly. But I know exactly what you're saying. It hurts you to hand that out to them, you know, that's the only thing they've got.
We got a compliment on the meal, but I want to tell y'all, it's the meal we got from the big wiggles. They said that was the best meal that they've had in several months and wanted to know when they could have fried chicken like that again. So y'all, y'all think about it because this is.
The seniors deserve so much more.
They do.
You're the reason why we're where we're at now and we've got to get back to it.
To say this, these seniors, most of them are the ones that built this town. Don't mistreat them.
Yes ma'am, that's right. And I hope you know this, we're fighting for you. I promise you that. And I hope somebody one day in this chair is fighting hard for us when we get to be seniors, which I know I'm getting close to it.
Well, still.
Can I say something?
Yes sir.
Okay. I'm the mayor, Taylor, and I know most of y'all don't know me and that's probably a good thing. This is not a political thing between Dave and I. I was laughing at Amanda the other day. She said, you're so adamant about this and there's not about 10 seniors that vote. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Y'all are the people that raised me, okay? I have the same values that y'all do. And I think we need to get back to those values. I have a mother that's 86 years old that has leukemia, bless her heart, but, and she goes down to the center. And I mean, it's very important. Of course, I usually get her a meal. I'm not able to because I work full time, but I go to the restaurant and bring her meals. And I know a lot of these people that we're feeding, these people I grew up with. And, you know, and getting back to where we need to be, we have seniors that say, look, we'll sign a waiver saying we can just come back to the center. You know, we'll, we'll take care of the liability. You know, if something happens to one of us, if we get COVID or whatever, just let us come back. This is why I'm here today. I drove from Taylor and y'all don't know me, but I got three teenagers. I don't know how. But they're all playing ball. But this is very important to me that we feed our seniors. Because like y'all all said, some of them, this is the only meal they get a day. And I'm adamant and me and Ms. Brown has talked several times on the phone and I know she gets a little upset with me and she probably deserves to get upset with me because I'm adamant about our seniors. And, you know, I think between, and I know I probably say too much, but the system broke. And we need to fix it and this is the way we're going to fix it. There's some people that, that I'm going to say this and I'm probably going to get in a lot of trouble, but there's prisoners that eat better than some of these seniors. And I said it.
That's right. What did you say to them?
And I want to do whatever it takes and go wherever it takes to get better food. Donnie has been a God sin. I call him at nine o'clock at night. I talk to him about seven o'clock this morning. He thinks every time the phone rings, oh God. Here's the mayor again, but he always answers the wrong if he's able to. But I want to say I appreciate the seniors, Ms. Brown. We'll do whatever it takes to get this straightened out. City of Taylor, City of Geneva, I know they said this is too isolated incidents, but that's kind of hard for me to believe. So I've said what I need to say and thank y'all for letting me come tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, Buck. Quick comment. First of all, I appreciate Robbie and Amanda from Taylor sending us the pictures of the food, the mystery meats and the various other meals that that are being sent, Mr. Henry, for our seniors to eat. Coming out of a pandemic, when many seniors have been homebound, they've been unable to get out, been isolated, and this is what we can do? It's unacceptable. Totally unacceptable. And you have your representative and your senator in Montgomery and our delegation here you. And we appreciate the commissioner putting up, taking our calls and hearing us.
I'm happy to.
And I talked to my colleagues in the senate last week and I encouraged them. I said, you talk to your directors in your district. You go have a meal. And you see if it's a problem in your area because GA Foods, we appreciate you being here, okay? You won the contract. If this is isolated, it's up to you. Who, when you won this contract, you said you would provide the food for the seniors in the state of Alabama. So we're calling on you now and we're asking you to stick your game up in the Dothan kitchen if that's the only problem we're having. And let's fix this. And better yet, why don't you come around and have some meal for some of our seniors? Okay? We encourage you to do so because, you know, it's about quality, okay? Quality of the food and quantity. It's not the director's job to go out and have to get 30 meals when they're supposed to have 70 delivered. So fix the problem. That's all we ask you to do and take care of these people that we represent. Thank you.
I'm Amanda Henderson and I'm the director of the Taylor Senior Center. I live in Columbia, Alabama. And if y'all know Columbia, it's on the other side of Houston County. I drive 40 minutes every day to work. And I would do it for free because I worked at a senior center that got closed in Hailburg because people didn't care about it. But I'm telling you, Robbie and I have seen this food go downhill quick. Before the pandemic, we didn't have much of a problem, but when this pandemic started, we had problems with this food. And today, as a matter of fact, the chicken that we got, I had one of my seniors call to tell me that he would not feed that to his dog who'd been dead for 10 years. That's how bad that chicken is. We fight for these seniors every day. We've been there for two years. We were fighting through this pandemic. We didn't get to work from home. We didn't have that luxury. Because we were there every day making sure that seniors like this and my seniors got the meals that they deserve. And we're still waiting for the meals that they deserve. So I want y'all to know that we're here for y'all and we so glad that we have to support the mayors and our representatives. And I can assure you that as directors, we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that y'all get the food that you deserve.
And let me say this, y'all are lucky to have a director that cares. That's why I talked to y'all's director and she's just as concerned as my director. And, you know, they did not have an easy job. I wouldn't.
I'd like to say something. Back in 1979, I was elected commissioner of this. Bill Patel met in Geneva, went to county commissioner and asked if there was a senior citizen place in Geneva. But commissioners couldn't do it because they wasn't up to the recommendation that was needed. But he said if we could get somebody to sponsor this senior citizen in Geneva, he would put one here. Then I asked him about Coffee Springs. He said, we can't give you two in the county. I said, well, you meet me here Wednesday night and tell them people Coffee Springs. And there were more up there than there are in here today. And he gave us the second one. You hired and sponsored this for the people down here. And I'm the oldest and probably in this area today. And for 94 years, I've come to Geneva and it's up to the people to state office. I know you can't do nothing when it's seen about it. But if it's reported to the right people, it has helped all of the senior citizens of Geneva County. And it's a pity that we have to hunker down and eat what we eating out there. And I don't need it. I'll be frank with you. I don't think my dog would eat some of it. And I appreciate it if y'all look into it and help us because we all need help here. And I thank God for letting me live, be 94 years old.
My name's Bill Ammons and I just want to start off, let y'all know I'm not a public speaker. I don't like talking in front of a crowd, but I lost my father last year, 91 years old. And he loved that center. I'm here to represent him tonight. He would fight you about that center. He loved Robbie Owens. He loved his staff at that center. He loved the friends he had at that center. But one thing I know, the only negative I ever heard come out of my daddy's mouth about that senior citizens. We'd have to get him lunch, buy him lunch. And I said one day, I said, Dad, I said, I thought they fed y'all at the center. He said, I can't eat that stuff. He said, it ain't fit to eat. He said, I can do without before I eat that. And he did. He'd never eat a meal up there unless it was something like where the members brought it in, you know? And it was locally cooked and they knew what they was eating, but he would not eat that stuff that was brought in. Would not, never did. And I tell you what, that pandemic was probably one of the worst thing that ever happened to our seniors.
Absolutely.
My dad, I saw the effect. He couldn't get out. If my dad went to that center and it was open, I knew he was sick. He was having a bad day. Because that's, I mean, he was, he loved that center. Thank y'all.
To the representatives of GA Foods, these stories have merit. I've been here six months on this job and I'm telling you, ever since the day one when our director had me out, we went out to serve meals, that's when I became aware of what we have a problem with. You know, I witnessed that first day baking sheets of tomato tops with stems on them. There were no sliced tomatoes. All we had was baking sheets of tomatoes with the green stem on top. That's the part you cut away when you're making tomato sandwich or BLT. You don't use that part. But there had to have been probably 70 or 80 of these slices. That's totally unacceptable. Now, I don't know who over there put that out, but they should have been fired immediately. And that's your, that's your job. That's your part. I know you're seeing this gathering of our good citizens here that God bless each and every one of you for what you've done for us and we're going to pay it back to you. I promise you, we're going to change this. Whatever it is we have to do, we're going to change it. But if you've got anything you might want to add or say that you can answer to some of this, as far as what y'all could do to correct it, I appreciate it.
Sure.
I'll be happy to. I'm fully vaccinated. You can probably hear me better without my masks. First and foremost, we thank you for the opportunity to serve both communities, both Taylor and Geneva. We thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And we regret that we're here because of the issue that's been brought forth to the council here. You know, I built my career on serving seniors for 27 years, feeding them nutritious, you all nutritious food. And our goal is to continue to do that. It's painful to hear the comments from you all. We're not discrediting it or not saying it doesn't have merit. Rather, we know we have to do something about it. Here's what we have done. We have changed leadership out of Dothan. We have mid-March brought in resources to support the unit. We have J.J. Noel, who's our state director, living at that unit every day as a quality measure. We also brought our corporate executive chef up from St. Keith. He's staying at least the next several weeks, six weeks if more is needed, to help our issues. And we've also done a bunch of training. So that's part of what Jake and J.J. and our added resource manager to the unit is doing. And what they're doing and have done over the past couple of weeks is retrain the staff on recipes and how to make recipes. Change, also train them on production methodology. We've really focused in on the items that come back that we know are issues. So whether they're collard greens or sweet potatoes and we're really focusing in on those recipes.
Didn't get that high into the list.
You know, and we've been, what we've seen in the last month is a little bit of movement for improvement. So let me put it in perspective. You know, obviously we've had conversations with the state that we've partnered with. And being on site and visiting both Taylor and Geneva, I'll tell you, we've learned a lot. And, you know, that's part of the process of the changes that we make at both senior centers. And we want nothing more to resolve the issue and I think we're trending to do that. To put that in perspective, along with conversations with the state, we look at this data every day. And what it shows is problems and problems can be anywhere from temperature, quality shortages were mentioned. And we look how we do from day to day, month to month, quarter over quarter, and we saw a slight. If you look at a slight increase from October to December, where our errors were from October to December, we went up almost a half percent in error increases for January to March. So we see the problem, but we're also able to identify how to fix the specific problem. One of the things that we proposed as a next step are really two things. One, look at the order of both Geneva and Taylor fall on the route. I think part of what can fall into quality is how long we hold the food, how long we transport the food before we serve it. So that's an indicator that we want to work both with Robbie and Amanda on. And secondly, we work very closely with another person in our organization. His name is Terry White. He actually was the secretary of state for the Department of Senior Services in the state of Florida. I'd like to offer him up as a liaison between the AAA, Dana, Hayden, yourself, and the council if needed. What we'd like to tackle is have at your frequency, daily, weekly, monthly conversations so we could hit the problems right on. And we could use him as, you know, our mediator, just in case we don't hear the full problem. But he's very effective with helping us fix the problem.
How long have you been working with?
GA? How long have I been working with GA Foods? Three years.
A year?
Three years.
Well, why haven't y'all looked into this before we had the night dinner?
So I would say, again, looking at the data, as I said, we did see a little increase from that last quarter of 2020 to this year. But as Amanda indicated and validated, pre-pandemic, things seem to be moving along pretty well. And, you know, the pandemic hit and here we are with issues.
Well, we not looking at state grave. We just looking at the way we have not been treated. And you not on your job or you been in a thing about us down here to us asking you that?
We had many, many problems long before the pandemic. Many, yes ma'am.
Robbie put out several surveys on how we thought about food and returned it back in. I'm sure she had passed on the upper level.
Yes, no disrespect, but we've heard this same thing over and over and over, month after month. New management, new chefs, new management, new chefs. It might be good for a day or two and it goes right back to it. I've had a lot from GA Foods here recently come visit our center and every day they have to run out and buy food. They have to run out and buy meals. They have to run out and buy things. I was hired to run a senior center to serve meals. I'm getting emails that say, okay, when this hamburger meat comes in, you need to drain it if it needs to be drained. You need to take a picture of how much grease. I shouldn't have to police this food. That's not my job to police GA's food when it comes in. We should, we're supposed to email Hayden, email two people at GA Foods if we have a supply problem. When do I have time to run the center? Because I'm constantly going out and dealing with food and doing emails and trying to get supplies. That's not what I was hired to do. I was hired to run the center and serve the food according to the state regulations. That's it. It's not my job to police this food as it comes in, but that's what has been put on our senior managers now.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to have you go through that. Our job definitely, we're not hired to make your job harder, anybody's job harder. We're here to deliver nutritious food to our seniors. One of the things, and we could certainly talk further after this meeting, Robbie, why we were looking specifically at Geneva and moving your routing was so we could do a quality check together. And we think that could be a more proactive approach than the process right now, which is we dropped it for, everybody that isn't familiar, for Geneva, we dropped the food off. No one's there. And then, you know, we get calls if there's quality issues. So that would lay in Robbie a level of quality control where we could check temperature, we could check food quality, we could check servings before, together, and get that equal sign off before we leave for the next hundred percent.
And by the way, it's not just Geneva and Taylor. It's a lot of the other centers. I talked to other center managers and, you know, we all talk, a lot of the centers will call and say, hey, you know, what was your meat like? And it's in Andalusia, it's in Coffee Springs. It's not just Geneva and Taylor. It's just that Geneva and Taylor have spoke up. The rest of them have not.
I understand that and, you know, understand we serve 334 senior centers throughout the state of Alabama.
Maybe that's the problem?
I don't, I'm not sure it is. I mean, I think our problem needs to be solved specifically for these two senior centers.
Hey Buck, what kind of time point are we talking about for this turnaround for our seniors?
I mean.
Tomorrow's too late.
Yeah.
We agree. We agree. And again, if we look at the progress since we put our actual plan in place, we've improved a half percent in terms of issues, number of issues that's coming up.
I'm 64 years old, so I'm just a step behind.
Have you, have you seen these pictures? Just out of curiosity, have you seen the pictures of what?
And again, we're not here to debate or deny anything.
There's no debate. We're looking at the proof right here.
We're here to fix the problem and I hope you'll start seeing. We're starting, we're starting to see the progress of things that we have changed. And again, just to summarize, we changed leadership, we added resources, and we changed process.
But this started a long, long time ago. It didn't just start with the virus.
I, I, I understand. I understand, but the here and now is what we hear and see.
And now we can only go through the drive-through and get a lunch in a bag. And some of us are lucky enough to have a menu so we can look to see if this thing, we think we might could eat it.
Trust me.
And if we can't, don't think we can eat it, we don't go.
We're committed to fixing that for you.
And they will ask for a menu just about every day they come through and their words are, so I'll know what I'm eating.
I hope also, you know.
And some days they won't show back up because they don't want to eat what's been delivered.
And that's unfortunate. Right. So, you know, again, I will hope as we see improvements, that you'll give maybe the menu items that you said no to in the past, give them a try and see if they improve. That's the only way you're going to really know.
We've been tasting it.
Jay was there today. He could have tasted it.
The pudding that you sent, it is so dry. You don't even have a taste in it.
And we understand there's.
Like, where did you get that pudding from?
We understand there's specific. We understand their specific menu items that definitely have to change methodology and recipes.
I have a question.
Yes.
When that food is prepared, do anyone inspect that food?
Yes, actually, it's inspected twice.
They don't taste it, do they?
They don't taste it. Apparently, they don't taste it. If you go to a restaurant and you spend your money, and you order something to eat, and if it's not right, what you gonna do?
You're gonna send it back.
That's right, that's right, you're gonna send it back.
I am a board member of Sarcola, which we represent seven counties. You have concentrated on Geneva and Taylor tonight, what about all these other senior centers?
So the change in process applies to every, every senior center that comes out of the Dothen unit. I mean, we're not just focusing in on these changes for two senior centers. The changes that we're making are global to, to the unit. So every, every senior center that's served out of Dothen forty-five plus will have positive impact from these changes. Again, we're focusing on Geneva and Taylor because we know that's the subject of concern.
If that type of focus that we can expect, tomorrow morning, we have quality food, that looks like food, that will taste like food, with no sticks in it, no stems in it, no burnt edges, no jello that's watered with coloring in it, with no- Yes. Mr. Lee, I'll let you lead.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hayes, to all of you who are here tonight, I've been sitting at this table about thirty-three years, from Mayor Herring down to Mayor Hayes. We supported the senior citizen center all thirty-three years, and I think Robert can attest to that. My mother's been gone twelve years, and this food problem didn't just start. It was then, when she was here, and some of the food then she wouldn't eat. So our folks deserve better, and this mayor and council is not gonna accept anything less than something better. Am I, am I saying-
Can I ask, who pays for all this food? Where's most of these funds come from?
From the state.
From the state. So the person you have to satisfy is the state, right? I mean, if they're okay with it, they're just gonna keep paying for it. So, I mean, we have to complain to the state, so-
Which favor our meals also.
Yeah, but the majority of the money comes from the state, so the state decides what everybody does. Can we fund this ourselves and just terminate all of this and-
Can I respond to this? Thank you. So just to respond to your comment, our goal isn't to just satisfy the state.
That's who has to pay you. That's where you get your money from.
That's right, but our goal isn't to satisfy the payer. Our goal is to satisfy the seniors.
Everybody said go.
I understand where we're at here.
I came in when he came in, and I've heard about this, and just like Mr. Amos, my daddy loved the senior center. And thank God, he's been there thirteen years, or he'd be standing right there preaching to you, 'cause he was a preacher. And he'd be telling you that this is some of the sorriest stuff he's ever seen. And I've, I've been up there, and I've been quiet most of the night, they know I'm gonna roll now. But this is horrible. This is just unacceptable for that guy to unload. I see him unloading it every morning when I'm driving my bus by. And I couldn't tote this in, just like Miss and Aunt has to deliver it, and I know her. And it hurts her every day that she has to deliver this stuff and go back the next day and see the trays sitting out there for the dog and cat, but they didn't, they didn't eat it. That's not a joke. And so, I mean, we gotta do something.
Yeah, and-
And I don't wanna be fixed tomorrow, and next week, it looks like this again.
And we're not here taking it as a joke. We're here taking this very seriously. We want all of our seniors to be very, very satisfied with our meals. And one of those action steps that we're proposing is to do a quality check at the senior centers, with someone from the senior center.
We have a young man.
Jojo, right? He came down, I know he's been down a couple of times.
I got one question. Why does it hold up on us dining in up there? No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about during the day.
Yeah.
We bought one play bingo. It's a lot better than sitting at home all day, getting a little meal we can't eat.
Be glad to address that.
Thank you so much. I'm Jean Brown. I'm gonna spell my name in case y'all want to give me a call. It's Jean, J-E-A-N, Brown, like the color brown. And I could talk all night, 'cause I'm a former prosecutor and retired judge, but I will not talk all night. But I just first want to, I kind of interrupted Mayor Snell, and I'm sorry to say Senator Chastain, when they said, "I get tired of hearing from them." That is my job, and I never get tired of hearing what you have to tell me. They are here to represent you, Mayor Hayes, certainly Representatives for Searls. Yeah, I said it right the first time, I messed it up. But first of all, I am never feeling bothered when someone calls to tell me about the food program, because I can assure you, there is no program at the Department of Senior Services that is more important to me than our senior meals. Because like so many of y'all, I'm just very, very aware that that may be the only nutritious meal that our seniors are getting that day. Y'all can look at me, I'm sure I'm older than a lot of y'all, and it's, nothing's more important to me than the quality of these meals. I do want you to know, we have three full-time registered dietitians, and I want to thank Amanda Henderson and Robbie Owens, because they send us pictures all the time. As soon as I get those pictures, and of course, the elected officials send me pictures, as soon as I get those pictures, I forward those to our three nutritionists for them to analyze. They then forward those materials to GA Foods. But there is nothing more important to me, and I'm here on that. You know, when I put on this pen, my cabinet pen, I'm representing Governor Ivey. And I know y'all all know Governor Ivey, and there is nothing more important to her than making sure that our seniors are nourished. And I do want to address that question about the senior centers. Now, there is a new order that was entered today. It goes through the end of May, and it still says that senior centers are urged to provide those drive-through and home-delivered meals. But that order is going to expire at the end of this month. And then we are looking toward bringing our seniors back, not just for activities, because under the last two governors' orders and state health orders, the meals, the congregate meals have still not been allowed. But we are getting very close to that point, and I hope and urge all of you, if you have not been vaccinated, I know Governor Ivey would not want me to leave this meeting without urging you to get that shot, either the one shot or the two shots, so that we can get back to normal and get back in the game. But we are looking very soon at resuming congregate meals as well as the indoor activities. So I hope that has answered your question. If you have any other questions while I'm here, let me know. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown, I've got one. NFR City recently reopened their center. Now, is that left up to the municipalities or what?
Well, under the current order from the governor and the state health officer, we issued, my department issued guidelines. And so, we have guidelines about cleaning and distancing. You know, the governor's not requiring masks anymore. She's just encouraging people to take reasonable steps to the extent they can to protect our seniors. So yes, senior centers are currently allowed to open. Some have told us those guidelines are too strict, but unfortunately, those guidelines are one size fits all. Currently, we have twenty-six counties in Alabama that are either moderate risk, high risk, or very high risk. And we had to take that into consideration in providing those guidelines. But any other que, and I certainly don't mean to take over the meeting, but I am, if you don't mind, any questions?
I have one. What are we looking at as far as a timetable for turning this around?
Well, I'm happy to tell you, actually, GA Foods and my nutrition team and others, we are meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday, May eleventh, as a follow-up to solving these problems.
We're all going to be faithfully watching, and hopefully, it gets better for us. If it doesn't, then we do have to make some kind of decisions on what we gotta do, because they're more important than, yes, sir, one last question.
I'd just like to ask, how much money is paid per meal?
It's three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Three dollars?
Three dollars and fifty-six cents for this area.
Have you checked one of their meals for three dollars fifty-six cents?
Oh, yes, when we have complaints before the pandemic, if we had a complaint about the quality of the food, I personally went to that senior center to taste the meal, yes, sir.
I'm telling you, it's the whole state, it ain't just-
That's what I'm saying. Any, I've been north, south, east, and west to senior centers. When we have a complaint about the food, I pick a day, I don't tell them I'm coming. I drop in, I taste the food, and I talk to the seniors who are there, because I do care so very deeply about this food.
How many is from Montgomery down here?
My deputy commissioner is here, this is actually his first day on the job.
Well, David, I recommend to this- I recommend to you to look into this and get it for the house up there, and get a bill passed to clean out this mess. Now, we senior centers, Donnie represents us, and we love him, but he can't do it by himself. But if you don't get something done in the one down here with you, it won't get done, because he's just peeing the dish. He's got bossing, 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 none of them. We're tired of it down here now.
Well, actually, we got the one. Chief Obray, Dr. and the Vice President.
And it's a shame and disgrace for the state of Alabama to miss treat the senior citizens in this way. I'm ninety-four years old, and I've seen a lot more than you ever have.
Well, I'm gonna knock there myself.
If you have complaints-
I keep hearing, we know about this problem. We've been working on it, we changing.
Fixing.
Talking about pre-pandemic, we was having problems. Where is the improvement? You know, it's all lip service. There's no improvement been made.
We had all of that problem through Valley before, before these people took-
Well, and actually, we're gonna stop those puddings and just require a prepared pudding. The things we know have a history of not working. Yeah, like churro patties. Well, the cobbler, for example, we may require a commercial, like just, you've tried.
But what about mystery meat?
We know those-
We don't know what it is.
Well, we have to approve the menus, we know the recipes, so we are working, and we will continue. We won't stop until we know the progress has been made.
Well, if you have got all these complaints for so long, why has it taken something like this? Did you try to do something?
Actually, we have raised of the food, you know, get to evaluate the food, and except for, the majority of senior centers on a scale of five have reported three point two, three point three as far as satisfaction.
That must not be different area.
We have records that show each senior center and how they graded the food, and it's all public record. I'd be happy to provide that to your library.
I just can't see, see how anybody would give that.
The problem is, we just got, y'all have got refined pallets in here.
Maybe we're better foods.
There's been a kind of a misnomer here that I'd like straightened out before we go. Because if I walked into this meeting right here and was oblivious to what was going on, you'd think that the state paid for all this food. Our seniors paid for some of this food. It ain't a free meal. It ain't a lunch ring meal. It ain't a prison meal. They participate in paying for this meal. And that even makes, I've got a child, so I bless my soul, that come home from school after the pandemic September and brought me up. A foreigner said, "You need to sign this," and I said, "For what?" And he said, "For free meals." And I said, "We don't need free meals of mine, we pay for our meals." And he said, "No, they're all free now with the pandemic." And I said, "No, you'll be taking your food to school then, because we don't take handout." This is not a handout from the government, y'all. These people participate in helping pay for this. Some people are not able to, and we let that slide, but other people do pay for this food. And it's, it's not as much of a burden on the state as everybody makes it out to be. I don't know how many meals, Robbie, how many meals do you serve a day?
It's all together, seventy-two.
That's about the same a week.
Yeah, we've had to resurface back up-
Yeah, and we run out of food, and we have to, and, you know, I was told one day, we'll go get a pizza. Well, I'm sorry, but, you know, cold pizza ain't good unless you've been at Open University party all night.
If you got no cheese, you can't eat no pizza.
That's right. Pizza's only good when you've been out all night. And I don't think none of y'all been to do a frat party.
So you serve seventy-two meals every day?
But it's not only the food, it's the quantity.
That's everybody.
We're not getting the quantity.
Just at our center, is that number consistent?
My last statement, somebody said a minute ago about, about appropriators, Representative Searls and I, as state legislator, you know, we make the appropriations to senior services, okay? In order to take care of our seniors. Now, GA Foods, GA Foods, want you here, okay? We're appropriating, this is your problem. If it's isolated to Geneva and Taylor, if it is, we expect you fix it, okay? We don't wanna keep getting these pictures of, and hearing these stories, they're, these are real guys. Now, I know you guys are from Corbett, and you can come in and you can do a song, you know, Song and a Pony, or whatever they call that little stuff. Pony show, yeah. We want results, and we don't want to quit. You hear me? Now, we can go to the council. Now, this is a, this is a contract that's awarded by the state, okay? And I was talking to the governor's office before I walked in here. Now, how much longer do you have on your contract in the state of Alabama?
So this goes through fifteen, and then, yeah, so another, another five is possible after that.
Okay, well, five years, all right, commissioner?
No, I believe it's got a year and a half left on, and it could be renewed.
That's what we're gonna watch very carefully, okay? To see if there are improvements, and we can't wait a year and a half, okay? And we're gonna do everything we can from the state level to make sure that the governor's aware, and I might even take our governor a good plate of this nutritious food, and just let them know where it's coming from, okay? We appreciate you being here, but this is your problem, fix it.
Donnie, when you do that, you can tell them it's up a half a percent. It's a half a percent better than it was.
A few minutes ago, I mentioned it, some of us seniors pay monthly to eat up there. I send them a check once a month, and it, I mean, I send them a hundred dollars a month. I've been doing it for several months, and I'm sure of several other seniors do it, because they have to out sometimes and buy food.
This time, I'm gonna say we'll close this part of the meeting, and I certainly appreciate everyone that came, participated, took the hits, but seriously, please fix this. We can't go on any longer like this, so we will have to fix it ourselves evidently. Yes, ma'am.
And I, on behalf of the seniors, if you gentlemen are gonna be in town tomorrow, come by Geneva and have a meal with us. There you go.